We'll officially call the meeting to order and thank you all for being here. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
No, sir.
Alrighty, we're on item number three, Budget Workshop. Um, Madam Clerk?
I think Governing Body is budget is first. Um, it's one page. I've listed, we went back and listed everything that's a major item that come out of the leach line item. So, we could go through it, or you could ask me questions. It's completely up to you guys.
Much pleasure to board. So, is it just expenditures?
Correct.
And it's oh four ten, oh four ten?
Correct.
Okay. Um, I just had a couple of questions, and I guess they bridge across. This Communications is showing up on like several of these, you know, and they all say the cloud, the online. So, that's a split between these different accounts, and that's just based on what? Or how's it split?
The number of users.
Okay. So, if they, the cloud costs go up, then that'll ripple across the different accounts? Okay.
Correct. So, that was a big bunch, a big jump from last year to this year?
The cloud?
Yeah, oh, Communications he's talking about.
Yeah, it went from, well, for this account, thousand to seven thousand, so.
Almost eight.
Yeah, almost eight. This is that, one, two, three, fourth line down.
The cloud did not go up, so.
Communication.
I know we did, um.
I'll have to go back and look at that, because I think that was from a Gatsby eighty-seven entry. But.
They had to put stuff in there?
Well, it's an end-of-year credit to that account, so it takes away.
So, you're saying the thousand is not realistic?
Well, that's actual last year, so that's gotta be real.
No, he's giving that.
No, we do an end-of-year entry, um, for Gatsby eighty-seven, that, and ninety-six, that does the subscription-based assets.
So, it would have credited that, and so it makes it arti, look artificially low for actual, okay, last year?
So.
And there was no increase in the cloud from last year to this year, so that's something like that.
Have you guys got more questions?
Um, what is A B? A B Travel, A B?
Appointed Board.
Yes.
Appointed Board? That's us.
So, yes and no. It, it's the other boards, but this is, those line items have been that way for a while. Um, yes, we take some of the Governing Board out of the Appointed Board, but technically, the Appointed Board is like P and Z and Board of Adjustment, those kind of boards.
Yeah, so the next one after that, Operational Contingencies, that's the other one that went up, way up from last year, four thousand to twenty-three thousand. Says Bank Service Fees, and you haven't spent twenty-one thousand of it. Can you talk to that for a minute?
Did you want to explain what was being taken out of there, Daniel? Sorry, Daniel Margaret also shared this one, so.
So, the, the Bank Service Fees did go up, um, not the, I mean, not twenty-three thousand, but, um, I'd have to go back and look at what was budgeted last year. But the, the service fees are just margin fee and service fee for the monthly.
Yeah, I mean, I see the four thousand that was spent last year, and then all of a sudden, it was, you know, twenty-three thousand for the budget. And it looks like you're only going to spend the four thousand that you did last year.
It, that's all that they're taking out of it, but it also goes for things like computers were to go down. It, it's basically what it is, operational, so if nothing were to break.
Some Maintenance and Repair Fund is what it is.
It's, but it's for contingencies.
Correct.
It doesn't mean you're going to spend it, it's just a.
Right.
So, you don't have to come and ask for money if you need to go replace something in a.
Yeah, for an example, um, yesterday, we had a leaking ceiling in the sound system. I wasn't sure we were going to have a, a meeting today, because it was leaking from the ceiling. So, it, it's stuff like that.
Well, you have a whole maintenance thing on the building with, instead of.
So, but that, but it's Governing Body, so more, that would be more like stuff, if my stuff breaks, or stuff in the boardroom breaks. There is a Town Hall Ops Maintenance one, but that's more for like air conditioners and plumbing, that kind of stuff.
And isn't that more for planned maintenance versus unanticipated? Is that correct?
Yes, and no, like, we actually plan for a couple of air conditioners to go out every year in the Town Hall line item, because it happens every single year. But, but, yes, planned, and there is a little bit of surprises in there.
They've got a cushion in that, I'm sure.
Yeah.
That's what she's saying.
Right, because they don't know what's going to happen.
Which, so.
Yeah. In the Town Hall Ops Maintenance Budget, I see generators listed. Do you have generator work coming this year?
It's to maintain it also.
Okay, so that's just for like the startup and service and cleaning out the diesel fuel and all that?
Yeah.
Correct.
Well, baby checks, we have a maintenance agreement on it.
Okay.
Can you, um, talk to the contributions one?
Yes, I think that, basically, that one changes every year. This past year, we took out the Booster Club and Brunswick County Search and Rescue, I believe, is that correct? Brunswick County Search and Rescue.
So, how does that get determined?
Wait, what do you mean you took it out?
Oh, that's who we gave donations to.
So, is that set in advance, or what's, is there a process? How do we, how do we determine who we give to, who we don't give to?
They're supposed to apply every year.
Okay, and we've got a target we try to hit, or?
Uh, it's, it's totally at the discretion of the board.
Okay. The same one, we're kind of tracking, well, tracking more towards last year's actual than this year's budget?
Yeah.
Unless you're expecting people to come and ask?
We've actually, it's headline, I think, we passed the headline of.
We're not past it yet.
Not.
Okay. I have a basic budget mechanics question, just, so, we've got this line here, and we're, we have a certain amount of money budgeted. If we don't spend it all, does it automatically go back to the fund?
Balance.
Balance, okay, so it doesn't have to be appropriated back, it normally just gets swept back in? Okay.
Now, now, for the next year, if you have a program that wasn't executed, the logic is that you would roll it over and re-appropriate it.
Right, I understand that, but it has to go back, and then you have to take it back out.
That's right.
Every year, okay.
Yeah, every, every year, we, we end.
It's basically one year money.
Yeah.
And then the transfer to the B Part Fund, that was for a specific project I didn't, so you haven't spent, the last one.
Uh, those are, those are year-end closing entries.
So, why is it so much more this year than last year?
Because for this year, it included, uh, part of the payment for the Central Reach Project.
Oh, it didn't last year?
I didn't. I didn't bring my files back in, so I can't say yes or no about it last year, but it included that for this year. That's why the, there's a big jump there.
Okay, so that was essentially for Central Reach, Christie? Is that, or at least part of it?
Yes.
But you haven't paid it yet, because it's still sitting there.
Okay, you don't pay it, remember, you don't pay it from this line.
Got it, okay.
Okay, remember, it's transfers to another fund.
Right, that's an expenditure.
Yeah, 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 okay, yep.
I don't know, I guess I'm still confused a little bit about that, because I mean, Central Reach has been going on for ten years, I mean, not ten years, but a long time. So, sometimes we transfer, sometimes we don't, or?
Right.
And it, it's based on fund balances we want to maintain in the accounts, or what's?
What, what, I don't understand your question.
Well, I mean, yeah, we, we're basically.
If, I think.
Answering another five hundred thousand dollars this year than we did last year.
Every year, it has changed the composition of the mix that goes to what actually goes into paying the debt service.
And I assume, David, this essentially depends on what all we have stuffed in the B Part to buy that year.
So, would we see a line item in the other fund that says, it said, I think we did already, right? It said Central Reach?
Yeah.
So, would somehow match up to part of this number?
Yes.
Yeah.
This number is not, this number is not as high as the number that was the debt service for Central Reach. That was one point two million. This is part of that, the transfers to cover part of that payment.
The, the exact match will be the revenue line in B Part that says transferred from, you know, that exact amount.
Okay.
So, the logic there, and correct me if I'm wrong, is when we took on Central Reach, we raised taxes dramatically. Those taxes come into General Fund, get transferred to B Part, B Part writes the check to the, pays the debt, is that?
I wouldn't characterize it like that, but could you repeat that?
Well, I mean, I, I remember when we undertook Central Reach, we voted to have a, almost a double taxes. We increased taxes ad valorem dramatically. The thought was that that increase would go to pay the Central Reach debt. So, that increase would come into General Fund, and then we write the check out of B Parts, we transfer over and write the check, or is there some, or does it just all get in the mix?
I, I, I think it all gets in the mix, Tom. I, I don't remember the board raising the taxes whenever the Central Reach project was bought, but I may.
Oh, I remember. It was big.
Almost doubled.
It almost doubled.
I, I, evidently, you've looked me in the books, and I haven't.
No, I, I remember when it went down, you know, will people go for that or not, and everybody went for it. But I, I guess that's a different, or bigger, you know, what gets paid out of which account for things like that? If it's transferring over to pay the check out of B Part versus writing the check out of General Fund, I'm still trying to understand it.
Well, I, I'll, I'll go again, and then if one of the two of them want to pile on, I, I think the, the thing here is that, so, yes, there is a revenue line in B Part that you looked at Friday, that like Daniel says, matches this number, because it says transfer from General Fund. But the entire amount of the debt service for Central Reach is the one point two plus the amount that I gave you Friday, that is the interest payment that's in debt interest. So, General Fund can support other funds, and it's a transfer that was made, a decision of the board at the time, to how much they would put towards B Part. That was a board decision during Budget Workshops, just like you guys will be faced with a board decision on how much you would like to transfer from the General Fund, if any, this year. The number varies from year to year.
Right. It depends on what they approved last year to get done. So, you went to the fund balance, the fund balances, and pulled money as necessary to make that budget work, basically.
I don't have anything else on this page?
No?
I'm good.
Okay.
Rick, you got anything down there?
No, sir, I think it looks just like.
So, the next page is the Admin Fund, and really, the only thing that was different within the past few years in that fund was the tax program that we purchased, that we've, let you know, we've got the new tax program that they're using, um, I guess Tax Water, all that, correct? All the financials, um, everything else that, I guess this fund is just questions if you guys would like also, unless you want me to go through in more detail on any of the line items.
Can I jump in on the software real quick? We've got a, uh, under Contracted Services, we have a software support thing, and my question was, is that just the general IT, or does that include software support for the new tax software?
For the tax.
Yeah, but I know Heather's got some other IT support and stuff, so, so, I guess, let me see if I can be specific. On the tax software.
That, that was the purchase, you're correct, that was to purchase the actual suite of the software.
Okay.
And then you have to pay a fee to maintain it.
And that's down in the other line?
Correct.
Got it, thank you.
And that's why that went from nineteen thousand to forty-two thousand, because you're having a lot of support for the first year, obviously.
Well, we had to buy it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you got, and you got to learn it.
Yes.
So, I.
I get the bugs worked out.
Well, is the forty-two the normal now?
Shake your head, David.
It'll be forty-two going forward, or is this a blip because of the transition?
The, the price of the tax software line will eventually just go away, and the support will be down in the other line. But we still have another section of the software to go for the Gov Hub, so depending on how soon we get that, what's left, we'll probably just try to carry over to pay the Gov Hub portion and the tax software. But the support that is yearly, every year for any software.
Right.
Well, it stays in the other line. And then the tax software is just for the purchase of the new programs.
So, these are purchased software, not kind of lease?
Not subscription.
Not subscription or whatever?
These, these are subscriptions.
They're, they're subscriptions, but it's what we have to pay to get everything converted, transferred, and the use of them.
Okay.
And then your support comes on top of that.
Okay, so the tax software line is kind of consistent at forty-three, forty thousand dollars, and that'll be the, the license fees and ongoing costs?
Not, not software.
The tax software will not be ongoing?
No.
But they do have that final stage, so she's saying some of it might have to carry over, because they haven't gone through all the stages of what they need to get the full suite.
Okay.
Which is why you have so much outstanding to spend.
Correct.
Right, right.
I have a question on printing. Again, this is just for my own education, so bear with me. I see we've got like six thousand bucks for printing, decals, letterheads, envelopes. Is that for like mail-in water bills and stuff like that, or what are we printing? That's it?
Where's, which line is it up?
Um, four twenty dash twelve hundred.
Um, yes, they have, um, we have all the letterhead envelopes, so we're sending out water bills, so you know that's monthly, so that's a lot.
Yeah, I was.
And then, of course, the water bill, um, is like a pre-printed part of it, and then the, um, the basic format is pre-printed, so we have to have those printed.
Okay. I was just curious what we were publishing.
Yeah.
Um.
So, sorry, I'm same way, I'm just trying to figure out what it thinks. So, that's in admin instead of being in the water sewer, like, an admin, I, I'm just trying to understand.
It's partly both, uh, because I use the envelopes also for tax bills. Um, envelopes are used for anything that we have to mail out.
Okay.
You know, they're pre, they have the letterhead, and then they've got a postage stamp.
Okay.
On the side, um.
But it, it just, I, I guess I'm just trying to understand for a water bill that is.
So, there's printing in water as well?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, there's an account, I, I don't have that one in front of me, but there's, the cost of putting the water bill out should be part of the Enterprise Fund for the water system, I would assume.
Yeah, it is.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
I've got one last question on this page again. It's just for my education, down at the third line from the bottom, Insurance and Bonds. Just explain to me what the bonds are, I just, I don't know.
That, that's a line item, but the majority of that fund right now is actually just the property and liability insurance for all of the town.
Oh, so there may not be a bond involved?
Correct.
Is that what you're, okay, all right.
But, I mean, we, we have had, uh, projects where we had to post a bond.
Okay.
You know, it's, it's, it's not in here, in this line, but we've actually got a bond outstanding on the Turkey Trap Road project.
I got you, okay. So, if it was something related to admin here, that's where it'd be sitting, if we had a bond, like, if we had a bond to build.
Well, this is, this is a, really a consolidated, um, insurance line. We pay the League of Municipalities insurance bill from that, which is pretty much.
An umbrella.
Everything.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, because I know that question's been raised a lot. It covers the docks, it covers the pier, it covers.
It's our blanket policy.
Blanket liability, okay. And it's enough? Are you comfortable with?
Well, the league sets the values.
Okay.
On what they insure, matter of fact, they just came down here recently, and the, uh, the, it's kind of like they tell us what they'll cover.
They did a big appraisal of all the town properties.
Okay.
Did that, and, and we fill out an application every year, and they come up, they, they basically take what we fill out and come up with the amount to pay each year.
Okay, I, I mean, everybody knows we're getting a lot of questions about the liability on the pier, so I just wanted to make sure that was in there.
It is.
Okay.
I don't have anything else on that page, David.
Yep, I'm good. I think I'm good.
Rick, you got anything on that page?
No, it's just five.
Then you're done with me, and you're on the team.
Want to do the same thing, Tim? We'll just ask you questions?
Sure.
Okay. Um, on Communications, what's in there? What, what's that involved?
That usually is handled by the administrative staff, but our communications consist of our, our phones, our hotspots, and our field communications, so that's.
Radios or anything like that, maybe?
Yeah, that's what it is.
Okay.
We, we, we try to have the ability to do the job in the field and in the office, and, you know, that requires those phones, it requires those hotspots, you know what I mean, so that we have real-time information.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
Um, under Advertising, I'm just assuming that's it, when you're advertising, uh, rezonings or whatever, that's putting it in the paper and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, some of the best examples I can give you is, is that, and that is a floating number, because we don't know how much of that's going to happen, but one year, we were short, because we actually undertook the bulkhead, uh, ordinance by its face value.
Yeah.
Went out and cited all of them, and we ended up, some of them, the ordinance required us to make big notifications on posters, because people were ignoring our, our letters. So, the attorney at the time said we had to post notice on the property, so we did it with four-by-four posters, you know what I mean? So, we had to have those made, and that's just an example. If you had a rezoning, I think Rick Green entered, uh, came to the Planning Board one time to have a piece of property rezoned, we had to put out posters and the notification, so it's that kind of stuff.
Okay.
And, you know, we did some notifications for the Parking Committee years ago, where we sent out stuff, so it's kind of what we're told to do, so we try to keep it up in there.
I got you.
That's what we got.
I, if you guys don't mind, I'm going to just run down the list, maybe. Um, under Contracted Services, um, I just want to be clear, that, that amount of money doesn't cover when you're having our architect do the bathrooms or something like this. This is pretty much what it says here, the surveying, um, well, it does have planned designs and vendors, does it include?
Well, what I mean by that is, is that there, every once in a while, there's a, uh, it dictates in our department, if somebody sends us something, say, an engineer sends us something, we're not real sure about it, we may have to send it out to an engineer to have them, us give clarification, so we can make sure that the public's safe. So, we may get re-clarification based on it is. A lot of that happens with the NFIP.
Right.
If, if we're in need of a document for the CRS or the NFIP, we, it may be a document that's required by an engineer, so we have to go out or survey it and, and contract to get that done.
This would not cover like design services for a walkway, let's say, or would it?
Most of that comes out of, out of.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's where the walkways were.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, but Tim's always in there, in the trenches, getting it done, I think.
Yeah.
The walkway by the pier looks great, by the way.
Yeah, we're hoping we're going to have handrails and, uh.
They're there.
I know, make preparation for the beach mats that come next. They're hoping to apply, once we get the ones we got down, I guess it is, but it's, we're hoping to apply for an extension, so we can get them out far.
Okay, great.
As soon as we can see what we do to do.
Um, the Homeowners Recovery Fund, what, um, I see that's as an expenditure. I thought that was money you guys took in for something. I have no idea what it's for.
Okay, here's what, the state, it is required by statutory rule that we collect ten dollars for, for permits that fall under the proper category under that statute. Uh, most of it is, is large remodel jobs or remodel jobs that meet the criteria for license criteria, new homes, or any kind of other construction. That has to do with residential. Uh, the, the statute requires us to collect ten dollars, and then we, we pay, the state gets nine, and that goes to the Licensing Contractor Board.
Sorry.
And we keep one, so that's why that.
Yeah.
Kind looks like it does. At the end of the year, it flushes out. We keep one dollar of everything. You can, you can literally use what we pay out, divide it by nine, and you'll know how much work we've done that falls into that category. I use that number as a matter of fact.
Okay.
But, yeah, that's, so that's a, that number's in there, because we've got to put the money in there to send it back out. We're not, we're making a dollar.
I was, yeah, I just, a lot of work for a little bit of cash.
Yeah.
Um, on, um, uh, let me see what line this was, going back up, Travel and Training. I'm assuming there's some of that money is in there for bringing your, getting your inspectors fully qualified for residential, commercial?
It's, that is, there is so much education that has to be done over there, and so much con ed that has to be done over there, that we try to, I kind of try to break it down, but you've got to remember, we have to constantly keep up all those certifications that's over there, including the stuff for the CRS, the NFIP, the Flood Lane Manager.
Mm-hmm.
Because everything that we have there that is even remotely, uh, connected to construction or construction, we get credit for in, in the value of the numbers that help keep that rating low.
Got you.
So, if we document going to a class that, say, FEMA puts out, we get credit for it. So, it, it, so it just, it doesn't cover all those certifications, it covers all those other things that Jana does with Gamma and all that.
So, this is kind of an aside, but by the end of this fiscal year, um, Carrie and Tara are going to be about where? Uh, I know one of them, I think, completed her requirements for residential inspection, so have I got that right?
She's still, she's still working on our certifications.
Yeah.
For the electrical side. She has the Level Ones, which gives her certain-sized buildings and limitations, and when she gets the, the electrical, she'll be fully certified for that, for that area.
Will that happen before the end of the year, you think?
Don't know, there's a, we, she was hoping to take electrical class, but it conflicts with a FEMA class that they need to take, which is important for our CRS.
Yep, got you.
So, she has a, she has three years to get those certifications. Uh, she's been hot-footing it so far.
Good.
But it looks like there's going to be a little conflict in there, but we're, we're hoping that she will have all those Level Ones by December of next year. That's kind of the goal, um, because there's some other things they got to take care of, too.
Okay, all right. Um, I think that's all I've got for you, thank you.
So, Tim, you, you've got a new system too, or one's coming? Is that in here, or is that over? What's the cost of that, and where is it showing up?
Um, Dan, didn't we take it out of the, didn't we take that out of the Contracted Services for the, um? The program's up, the program's running, we've done all of the, uh, education, we've taken all the courses that we need to get it running, but it's been functional since November.
Okay.
So, it's running, and it's, it's, it's working. It's a portal system, um, and it's, uh, it seems to be making everything a lot smoother over there, and quicker.
So, it's, that's just for inspections?
That's just for inspection.
Okay, so, I guess this is back to Daniel, then where, is it in here, or is it just, or did we already pay for it the year before?
I think we paid for it out of last year's budget.
Last year's budget?
Yeah.
Okay, and it doesn't have any support in here, or what's?
It's, it's, the, the, the contract had like three years, um, on, before, before we happened in there.
Okay, so you paid when you paid for the software?
Yeah, we paid for it upfront, and they, they give us continuous support.
Okay.
It's cloud-based, and it's, they give us, we, we still have their, it doesn't cost us to pick up the phone and call them.
Okay, and I think I heard that you were going to integrate it with the other systems for, I don't know, it was billing or what, but it seemed like.
We do, they, they can now pay.
Okay.
They can pay online, and when they go to the portal, our, every contractor now gets a, when they get a permit, they have the opportunity to get a number, and they can use everything through the portal, they can schedule their inspections, they can pay without having to come. They can pay without having to come back in to get their permit. As a matter of fact, Carrie's got a stack that they had to go out and put up, I believe. So, or, or got something to go put up that I saw yesterday. So, well, we are actually, instead of making them come get the permits in some cases, if they don't want to, we go out and put them up for them. So it's kinda streamlined everything. Working well.
Cause that, that's all been paid for. There's no incremental.
There's no more, no more charge. There is a service charge fee for them to pay online like they do.
Oh, we'll get more revenue?
Yeah.
So I see that you got a new vehicle this year?
Um, that was, that vehicle.
Last year?
Well, I think that was this year, but yeah.
Yeah.
We got a new vehicle this year. We have three vehicles.
That's what I was gonna ask.
The two vehicles that we had before were the average age, I mean, the average age was like sixteen years. They were thirty years on both of them with a mileage of over two hundred and some between them. And so, um, we had already replaced one before Ronda left and then we, we recently got another one. So we've got three that are less than, um, three years old.
That, how many employees use?
We have three.
And does anyone take them home?
Yes. Me and, me and Jana. Carrie, Carrie doesn't take one home because she, she can't, she has a conflict with children and, you know, the rules don't let her move children in a town either.
So I think I asked this previous meeting and I apologize if I'm repeating myself, but when you retire the truck, that money that gets, gets auctioned off, right, and that goes in somewhere else that's not in this account for inspections or?
Did you look at the revenue sheet, that sale of fixed, uh, sale of fixed assets line? It's on the second page of the revenue.
Five thousand budget, okay.
That's, that's where it goes.
Okay.
For, for building inspections, for, for any front end vehicles.
Okay.
So free, same page.
So I, I probably should've brought this up on the other ones too. I just did kinda some rough, overall, last year's actual three thirty-five, this year's five twenty-five. I mean, that's like a fifty-six percent increase. Is that the vehicle or just everything going up? Or what's the driver?
Increase from the year before to this year?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just comparing the twenty-three actual to the twenty-four budget. I mean, uh, it probably was handled during the budgeting talks last year, but just curious.
We got, we got the vehicles. We, we were anticipating possibly not being able to get like the permitting program, you know what I mean? And, uh, we were expecting the influx of some of the issues we were going to have with the ADA stuff, maybe having to, you know, I mean, put some money in, into that stuff. So. If you're talking about the budgeted money compared to the year before, what they used, was used the year before?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, you know.
Well, you got the salaries too. We got, we added a person.
Okay.
There was a person that was added at the top and so, and there was a salary increase the year before.
And everything went up?
No, I, I understand. I'm just trying to get a feel for, is this what we're gonna look like?
But that's what it was.
Okay, going forward, year over year?
The salary increases in the department went up because when the thing was done, they, they were low and, um, and the other things I said. But that, that was some of the main things. Um, yeah, I, I think if you look at it, you know, you got the contracted services because we were anticipating, for instance, we did, we did do some stuff with like, um, striping parking lots and that kinda stuff cause Hollstead wasn't part of it and you'll get that report by the end of the night for some ADA stuff. Because there was some stuff that was outside the Key Bridge stuff that we had already planned to do before that came down. And, and you'll get a report on that at least.
Good.
So that, that work, um, is done as part of inspections, Ann, or what's the, when does it go to public works? When's the inspection for paving parking lots or parking spaces?
We, we just did it because we were in a, what I just mentioned, one of the things I just mentioned, we were in a time restraint. We wanted to get it done and we, all we did was go out there and line the parking lot. We did it like at lunchtime, me and Stan. So we bought the paint. So I guess you could say we killed some of the government red tape by taking the initiative. And we do that every once in a while.
You'll probably get punished for that, just saying.
Yeah, I'm not gonna get punished.
Yeah. You got anything else?
No, I mean, you know, I'm just looking at the bottom line now, you know, we're forty-two percent spent. I think we're sixty percent, fifty-eight percent through the year, so we're tracking okay or?
Oh, yeah, we're, the, the real.
I'm, I'm not gonna agree to that. I, I, I told you all my concerns about having an artificial, a, a calendar to, to be the, uh, the metric on where you are in your programs. I, I don't like it. I don't subscribe to it. When you say that your, your optimal, uh, ratio, I don't know if it's on there now, your optimal ratio is, your, your two-thirds of the way through the, through the year should be two-thirds of the way through on everything and that's just not the way it works.
Well, true. I mean, things are gonna pick up in the spring and they slow down in the winter, right? That's what you're referring to, David?
Unless you.
It's not linear, you know, it's what you're saying.
That's right.
Yeah, I got you. Yeah, I, I realize that. As more building and stuff goes on, you'll be busier.
Anything else I got?
I'm good.
Rick?
I looked at the numbers and they, as you said, everything is increasing price. If you do the math and add the vehicle in, it makes, makes perfect sense.
Chief, I guess you're up.
Lucky me, right? Um, we can do the same thing. You can ask questions or I can run through it. I put some notes out there to the side of, um.
Does your communication totally separate or is it same communications, IT stuff and that we?
So we, we have some things that are different, like with our CAD system, but the, the other IT stuff is like split with Heather and, and the admin sides.
So you have a CAD system?
Yes, which CAD is computer automated dispatch, CAD.
Okay, because that's, being an engineer, I'm going, you've got CAD and he doesn't. It just was like.
So computer automated dispatch, not that we are doing the dispatch, but we are tied in automatically with our dispatch center. So, so a lot of the communications comes out of that, um, inside the vehicles, like Tim was talking about with field ops and mobile hotspots. We're basically running mobile offices inside the, you know, the officer can do everything in the field on a traffic stop, have communications with dispatch, run driver's license, tags, all, all that information. So, so it's all available in the field and it's to each vehicle. So that's, that's where a lot of that communications comes from for us.
Okay, I just, the CAD threw me. I just.
Right, yeah, that's, that's computer automated dispatch. That is what I, that's.
All right.
A lot of acronyms.
Yeah, yeah, and I've, I've got a question under community watch, just along that way, donation to BSNR?
Okay, so.
Just what's BSNR?
So it's Brunswick Search and Rescue and I actually learned a little bit today in, in that. So I knew that they usually ask for a donation and we usually try to pitch in and do five hundred because they help us out tremendously. But it's apparently come to my attention that, uh, they have not asked for that donation yet and, and I'm not sure how that solicitation process goes, to be a hundred percent honest with you. But that's usually what that money is for. We, we donate to Brunswick Search and Rescue.
Okay. I've got one other question for you and it's just, uh, you've got an M and R for equipment.
Yes, sir.
And you list radios and then you have equipment and you list radios again. I know radios are a pain in the butt cause you have to update them and they change how they operate. Could you just discuss what the difference between those two lines are?
So I will and, and how it was intended and kinda go through that.
Okay.
So usually the equipment line is for purchasing equipment and the M and R would be to obviously maintain and repair it. We are in the process, the entire county is, in, in switching to Viper and.
Yeah.
You may be familiar with some of that.
Yeah, a little bit.
We've been integrating and purchasing radios as we go through, instead of trying to purchase all the radios at one time. And I actually just got an email last week, I think it was. Um, they've finally given us a, a deadline date, which is June of twenty twenty-five. So there's, you know, that's gonna be our deadline date. No more kicking the can down the road. Anything after June twenty twenty-five, if we're not on their system completely, our radios won't work. So that's kinda why I've been splitting it up is at this point, I'm kinda Robin Peter to Pay Paul out of both of those lines to make sure our radios are where they need to be. And I've, I've got a, um, an idea here. We have currently seven phase two ready radios. They're, they're ready to go. Um, they just need to flash upgrade. And then we have a total of three portables and three mobiles that we will need to purchase by June of twenty-five. So part of what I've got in there where I'm like, hey, we're gonna be at a hundred plus percent, you know, obviously I'm not, I can't spend, oh, it's not in the budget. But I was just putting those numbers in there to, to get us there, we're gonna have to flash seven radios, purchase three mobiles and three portables and then we will be up to our twenty twenty-five, you know, where we need, but we just need to be there by June of twenty twenty-five.
Does that, you got some spares in there?
That, that includes us, one, one spare, uh, portable radio. So, yes.
You comfortable with that?
We need at least one spare, yes.
Yeah, well, of course.
Yes.
And I just, is, are you comfortable with just one, is my question?
We, uh, yeah, obviously don't need them. I think he's asking if we would need to. I, I don't know how to answer that. I would tell you this and, and it's liable to change tomorrow. The Motorola's that we have have been very good. They've been very reliable, very dependable. And I honestly think that one would get us through. Now, what does that mean? My luck, one's gonna break and then a week later, the second one's gonna break and we're gonna be scratching our head. But in all honesty, I think with the track record of Motorola, my, my opinion is that, that one is sufficient to have one spare.
Is there a big lead time on them? Say you, you lost one and?
Now they're, that.
Don't like Frank laughing like that.
Yeah, the, the lead time is actually, is ridiculous.
That's what I was afraid of.
Yes.
Cause these things are not sitting on the shelf anywhere.
They, they're not.
Are you kidding me? Are you serious? Do you anticipate that to continue like that?
Was that a COVID thing?
Oh. Not two and a half years. They, they blamed it on COVID and it was because of circuit boards being made.
Elsewhere.
Elsewhere. Um, so, um, it's still, it was, it was about four months pre-COVID and I would say six months is probably where they're at now. So.
So will the county help at all? I mean, do they have spares that can loan you to?
So if we needed one, if we lost one, I'm sure I could get my hands on one temporarily from the county. The, the radios, oddly enough, that we're replacing, five of handhelds and five of the mobiles were given to the police department when we first went to phase one Viper. Those radios are, are obsolete. They won't be any good. They're, they're of no value. But we're obviously gonna return those to Brunswick County. So we, we, as Chief said, we've taken the time over the last eight years. Every time we replaced a vehicle in each budget, we've gotten a radio or two, anticipating this coming. And we've made it within six of the twenty-two to twenty-four, twenty-six, whatever total it is. So, you know, we got, we got eighty percent of them basically.
Yeah, I just don't want you to get caught because we didn't anticipate a long lead time. If you got some other workaround, if you end up down to minus one, that's cool, but I just, you guys need to have your radios.
All right, we definitely have to do some exercises and figuring on that, so.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
And then just from my own, we're talking in the car radios and portables?
Yes, so, so every car has a mobile, is what's called a mobile radio and then every officer, which I didn't wear mine in here today cause I didn't want it going off, every officer has a portable radio also.
Okay.
We also have a, a base station in the office. So that's another radio. Um, so, yes, it's everywhere. Just no matter where you go, you can talk to those.
These things are pretty expensive too. It's not like.
Ridiculous.
Things I'm used to, right?
Yes, they're, they're like.
Five grand a pop?
About five grand apiece, which is crazy because my, I mean, they don't, they talk. This, this right there doesn't cost five grand and it can do way more than what those radios can do, but that's just.
It's not on the emergency system.
It's not on the emergency system. That's right.
We should get, we should get three vehicles per, that, that's been the track record is, is unless the technology changes, we're getting two vehicle installs per motor radio. So you, you buy it once and then you don't have to buy it the second, the next time you replace that car.
I got you.
The, the only exception has been we're trying to get phase two right now. There, there is nothing, the FCC is pushing right now for a phase three. So I can get real technical, but I don't want everybody getting mad at me. And Motorola holds up. We had an officer leave one on a bumper a couple of years ago and drove down the causeway and a citizen returned the radio to us and it was about two-thirds of its original thickness. Took it to the shop and they put a plastic case on it and handed it back to him.
Wow.
Zero damage of it.
I'm shopping for a cellphone. I'll keep that in mind.
Different department that makes Motorola's.
Yeah, I'm sure.
So vehicles, how many total vehicles do you have? You bought one, the, the eighty-eight thousand is one that was bought last year?
Yes, we did, we did not replace any vehicles this year, correct.
Okay, so how many do you have?
We have, I wish I'd have brought my dag on list with me. Eleven, oh, nevermind, right here. Okay. Twelve. Ten, the black one, I thought, yes. So twelve vehicles.
Twelve vehicles?
Yes. So that would be the ten officers, the black one for the spare truck and then, or the, the black one, the unmarked for the detective vehicle that's not being utilized and then the one spare. That's right.
And those are all taken home except for your spare? You have a spare?
The, the only ones that are taken home are the ones that are actually issued to officers.
And you have ten officers?
Well, we have ten positions. We don't have actually ten officers. Correct. So, so those, those are unassigned vehicles. They're not being taken home. They're, they're sitting at our EOC building waiting.
Thanks, David.
And some of those aren't updated, like mileage and stuff, but.
Yeah, that's true.
So for vehicle replacements, are, is every, the whole town's looking at seven years, seventy thousand miles maybe? Of course, what Tim said obviously defines that.
Yeah, we typically follow a seven year, seventy thousand mile and we, we have several fourteens on there that are obviously a ten year and I think a few of those are actually well outside the seventy thousand. I think we've actually got one now that's over a hundred thousand, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, they seem to go in waves here. We've got four of them in two thousand fourteen, four of them in twenty twenty-one, so.
It's, and unfortunately, it's where we don't buy, excuse me, where we don't get vehicles for two or three budget cycles and then all of a sudden we're saying, hey, we, we got four vehicles that are out and we're replacing four at a time instead of, you know, doing a program where you're just, every year you're replacing two vehicles. I'm not suggesting, I'm just saying, instead of, you know, every year you're replacing two vehicles or something like that.
Yeah, that was, that was kinda.
They, they kinda get stacked on top of each other.
Well, then it just perpetuates because then they don't have the seventy thousand miles. They all come to it at once.
That's right.
Yeah.
When you don't get them replaced on the periodicity, do you like, do you experience any reliability issues or increased maintenance costs? Well, you're up at two hundred thousand, so that's a difference. But to me, that's one thing to look at, uh, condition based maintenance and replacement. So if, you know, it's in great shape and of course, it depends on how critical it is, what happens if it goes down? That's something you can look at to decide if you need to replace it. Obviously, you guys, you don't need a vehicle breaking down or not starting. And Chris is guys much the same way. same way.
That's why they have the spares.
Right. Well, that gets down to that condition-based assessment, you know, as opposed to just a periodic thing. Because, you know, for me, you know, if a car breaks down, it's not a big deal. So as long as it runs and it's reliable, I'm okay with it. But you guys have responsibilities, I tell them.
They, once they start getting up to the extreme, like the 14 Rams that we have, there's actually, on that list, should be four of those. One of them is the black unmarked, and there's three marked. Two of those are still operational trucks that we use. One of them, to be honest, is a parts truck. It is sitting over at the mechanic shop. And when something breaks down on one of the other 14s, we're basically taking parts off of it, sticking it on there. I mean, it's, you know, doing what we can to keep those running.
Yeah.
They've done great, but at 10 years old now, and the mileage and where interior they've got on them, they run their life cycle. So the seven-year, 70,000 mile seems to be a pretty good standard. You know, I can't say that I've necessarily tracked it to see at what point it just falls off and where we start spending that money.
That's a good point, especially in today's market for used vehicles.
This is helpful. So I guess it's for, those two, I'll call them tanks that are sitting on the EOC, are they on this list, or they?
They, the, you're talking about the Humvees?
Well, yeah, the big ones that were in the back there that you've got to deal on.
There, Chris is, I can tell he's smiling.
Whose are they? I don't know.
They're not in the budget.
Okay, so...
They're not on this list, or they're not in the budget at all?
Yeah, they're not in the budget. They have not been updated on the list at all yet. So those are, those are from the law enforcement support services program. And what they are, they're military vehicles that you fly through the law enforcement support services, go through, that comes with specific requirements and all that stuff. But then we can use them during storm response, hurricanes, things like that, high water, flood events.
Right.
So that if you have that, you've got much more ground clearance. They're designed to do a lot of things that our pickup trucks are not necessarily...
We didn't have them when we lost that other truck.
We did not have them then, no, sir.
And they run? I mean, they're...
They do run. We just picked those up this year. Now, they do have some things that have to be done to come into compliance with the rules and regulations of that. And that was not included in this budget. We're working on trying to figure out exactly how to go about doing that for the next budget cycle.
So do you consider those public works, or police, or both, or?
They're, by law, they're required to be police vehicles.
Okay.
Yes.
But if public works needs to go to the sewer station in three-foot-deep water, nope, can't do it?
They can't operate those vehicles. Could we assist him in getting down there? Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
There's no place that these other trucks won't get to, right?
Correct, correct, yes. But part of that with the law enforcement support services, with the military agreements that we have to sign, is that they are only, under any circumstances, to be used for law enforcement purposes. They even go so far as, some agencies have tried to put them in parades and show them off, and they're like, this is not what this is for. This is to support your operations. So you're not even supposed to drive them in parades. So they have a lot of details and rules with it.
And there was essentially no cost with that, right?
No.
It's kind of stuff that the military would surplus out otherwise.
Correct. The only cost is they require you to maintain the equipment. And when you get done with it, you call them up and say, hey, we've done what we needed to do with the equipment, and we appreciate the support, and then we return it to them.
Nice.
That's one of the other rules, is that we can't sell it. It's not ours to, you know, we're basically borrowing it from them. It's how that works.
Nice, okay.
Well, if it saves us from trashing a truck, they pay for themselves.
Yes, absolutely. And that was our goal.
Well, they paid for themselves.
It didn't cost anything. That's easy to do.
Yes.
Just let's qualify that. There's probably, I don't know where Frank is with his count. It's probably $15,000 of stuff that we need to do to it. Maybe up to 20 now, or he may have cut it down. But there are some things that have to be done to, shall we say, civilianize the vehicle.
And if I could qualify what town manager's saying, to do it, cart, all the bells and whistles and everything, it'd be close to 50 grand to make them operations combined for both vehicles. Got it down to 30, so 15 each. And what's, we got to demilitarize the appearance for our own optics on the island as a, you know, family beach, number one.
Stop the intimidation factor.
Right. Blacks not, we want it to, we want it to say, we're here to help, not we're here to get you. We're not, you know, we're not going to use it to kick your door in, is the point.
Yeah, no martial law, right?
Right. So they need to be painted. They need some graphics to identify them properly on. And they need some communications and lighting. I have two light bars that came off of other equipment. So there's $5,000 there we don't have to spend. Part of the radio system, that two of the upgrade radios that Chief mentioned are waterproof models because they were cheaper when we bought them six years ago. The plan is to move those to these two Humvees, and then put the newest, biggest, best things, you know, the newer radios in the newer vehicles that are daily use.
Right.
There's a little bit of mechanical, but just to give the example, you know, we're trying to make this stuff go as far as we can. And we actually have a citizen, I won't name him in a public meeting, who has used to build custom vehicles from the ground up, and has offered to assist us in painting the vehicles. And we have another local citizen in Brunswick County who's offered to paint them. So I'm really close to just buying materials at this point to paint those. And we've been trying to do some of that, you know, to offset some of the costs, because that's easily 6,000 apiece to paint them for painting graphics. And you'll see a breakdown of that coming at some point from Chief or town manager. That's certainly a fluid number as well.
So you're not ready to put those vehicles in service yet? You need to get this stuff done, right?
I'm trying to have everything done. My target date was August 1st.
Okay.
So. And it took three years to find those configured that way, by the way.
All right. Well, I just didn't want them to sit because it, you know, it's an emergency asset, as I understand. So if you need them, you need them.
So before the next hurricane season is basically your goal?
Needs to be before August. Could happen July hurricane, yeah. I'm good.
100 CRP? David, who's got the CIP?
Well, however y'all would like to go through it, I propose that perhaps you just start at the CIP expenses. And basically, it looks like to me that we're organized by department anyway, since we have the department heads here to chime in and give specifics on it.
So you want to skip the revenue and go to the...
Because what will happen is you'll refer back to the revenue, and the expenses are pretty much project-based.
Yeah, I guess my only thought or comment on the revenue is when we have grants in here, I think we saw some, they're specific to an expense. You know, you can't spend that money on anything. And so it's not like you could take that revenue bucket and use it to pay for the expense. They've got to...
Right.
Okay. So that just is not in this, it's tracked separately to make sure that, you know, this revenue only goes to this expense. Is that, or how are we?
Yes.
Okay.
David, under the fiscal year where it says 23, 24, is that a budgeted number? That's not a year-to-date number, right?
That's beginning-year budget number. And there's probably going to be some anomalies between that and what's actually in the budget.
Okay. For the direct appropriations, Fed and state, that's the second line there, is that going to be for like stormwater?
That was the $100,000 for the participant, partner, PPA.
The core thing, and then I see...
Stormwater.
And then the next year might be a grant for stormwater, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Projects.
Yes, sir. Right, okay. There's a stormwater fund balance appropriation. I was just curious, where did that come from? Did it come from BPAR, general?
General thing.
Okay.
Let me see. But, and I know y'all wanted, y'all started on revenues there, but I'd still suggest that you start with your expenses, then you can refer back to, because the expenses are project-based. And the revenues may or may not be project-based. But we'll do it however you want to.
Okay. So if we look at the expenses, this is all the streets that we were talking about when Chris was in here, and every year you have it prioritized. So that's pretty self-explanatory, I think.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And the thing to note there, I think that the high point out of that is, not the high point street, but the high point, is that, you know, what's in here are four years' worth of streets expenses. And when we started on it, we had a 10-year glide slope on our plan. So we're, the need to update that streets assessment, you can see that, hey, we finished six of them before. We need to update that plan.
Yeah, so there should be something in 27, 28.
The order of merit will stay the same. It's the values that's going on.
All right. So I hate jumping expense back to revenue, but aren't these Powell bill things? The streets?
The town receives reven, Powell bill revenues for maintenance of its streets.
But not for these expense items?
It could be used for it, but it's not specifically detailed in the capital plan that is used for streets, paving.
So there's no Powell bill that shows up in revenues?
Not in the capital plan.
Okay.
It's 40,000 a year is the Powell bill revenue.
It's probably buried in that line, one, general fund, operating revenues?
Yeah.
Well, that says you're paying it out of the current budget numbers, right? Is that, that's my interpretation of that, operating revenues? You're paying it out of the general fund? Well, yeah, I just, my understanding is this shows us in the expense where we're going to be spending the money, and up in the revenues where we're getting the money to spend. And if we're going to use Powell bill to pay for these, then it seems like we should have a revenue associated with these expenses. If we're not going to use Powell bill, I mean, that's kind of how I read it right now, is there's no Powell bill in here. So we're just paying all these out of the general fund.
Well, we didn't detail at that level. We didn't detail at that level.
So you're still looking for where's the Powell bill?
Well, I mean...
Is it in the general fund?
Yeah, it's on that revenue sheet.
Yeah.
The thing that he handed out?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's good.
A core project, once you find out that feasibility study, that would determine if you're placing it on there with your construction cost. So I think you may want to wait till you get to the end of your core study in '26 to find a placeholder in your CIP for that.
Okay. I got you.
I understand what you're saying. I guess I'm just, you know, we've got the debt service, which we passed out earlier, which, you know, looks like there's a light at the end of the tunnel four years from now when we pay off some stuff and we don't have big debt service. It'd just be nice to counter that with, yeah, but we've got some big-ticket items that we're kind of placeholdering out there at the same time so that we can, you know, manage these big expenses against our debt payoff and get an accurate, longer-term picture, as accurate as we can get at ballpark, whatever you want to call it. But to not put them out there, they're just, they're not, it's like they don't exist, but they do.
Okay, so do we want to go back to expenses or, and then come back to the revenue idea?
Yeah. But I mean, is there a plan to get to like a 15-year instead of five-year or is that on the wish list or?
I think that 15 years is too far out, that it's, that 10 years is where we should be, where we should be limiting our planning horizon to.
Okay.
Sounds like we have to do 10 as a minimum, David.
Well, for many, many of the grants, they want a 10-year, a 10-year CIP. Now, I mean, you guys know this better than I do, the further out you go, the more, the more margin.
Margin of error.
The swaggy, the more swaggy it gets.
You know, we're gonna go from semi-wild guesses to really far-out guesses.
I totally understand, but, you know, and I'll just go back to beach nour-, you know, that's a huge ticket item that I think we realize at some point we're gonna have to have, and yeah, we've got a big range on it, but to not include it or not even put it on here, I think, isn't...
So I'll counter a question of that then, because we need to come to an agreement before we bring it back. Knowing that it's designed for 15, do you want to put it at a 10-year period so it's on a plan?
If that's the, the plan is for 10 years, I'm not sure what the plan is right now. When do we think our next big nourishment, whether it's the core or we have to pay it out of pocket or, you know? Ideally, it's FEMA.
Well, I was gonna say, I can't answer that because it depends on if we're hit by a storm or not, but the beach as it was built in '22 is designed for 15 years with background erosion. So technically, if we're saying we're not doing a 15-year plan, it wouldn't be on the plan. If you're saying you want to see it on a plan somewhere, I'm asking, do you want it on year 10, because otherwise, I just don't want us to mislead.
So are you saying 15 years is when we'll need to do something again?
By design.
It depends on, by design.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, but still, for 15 years, you should be saving up for that, right? In theory?
In some capacity.
Right.
So why wouldn't we put the 10 years of saving, understanding that, you know, you would have actually 15 years?
So...
Let's say it's a million, say it's gonna be 15 million in 15 years, so then for 10 years, if we're only gonna do 10, we can see a million dollars a year. Does that make sense? Am I...
No, that's, that's, now whether it's in the SIP or it's some other thing that we have, but I just think it's very...
You know, so you don't want to get to 15, well, okay, so you do 10, and then, then you have five years to figure it out, because in five more years, you're gonna have a huge expense potentially.
I think to answer your, to answer the question that you asked, would we want it to show at the 10-year mark, at least as a placekeeper? You guys jump in if this isn't it. We would want it to just show, so when you look at the capital improvement program, you see that it's there and somewhere down the road, it's a thing to be considered.
I think what I just heard Tracy say is that she wants some amount shown as a savings per year.
Yeah, for the first 10 years.
Oh, I got you, okay.
Yeah, so it should be in there for the first, for a 10-year plan. You look skeptical, Kristi, I'm just, I'm just curious, like...
Because I have no idea what the cost of dredging's gonna be in 10 years.
Right.
Exactly, but we know it's not gonna be zero, which is what we'll have in our bank account in 10 years if we don't start saving.
And also, it's gonna be different depending on if it's, the way it's approached in percentages, if it's a core project versus if it's an independent project, but we'll take a shot at putting something down on the CIP to have for review.
Thank you.
Your best bad guess, I guess, is what we're looking for, because that's where we end up.
Do we have any idea what FEMA or the core we pay for any of that?
I can't guarantee FEMA will pay anything, because there's such a thing now as repetitive losses, and they've replaced our beach. So that has been raised at the state level, and I can make no insurance guarantees to you that FEMA will pay if we have any losses again. We would apply.
What about the core?
We have to get to a point that we finish our study, and we, they decide based on the study if it's both economically and environmentally feasible to become a federal project.
Isn't there a 25% cost share minimum with the core? Don't we have a cost share with the core program?
There's a cost share, but I don't think it starts out at 25%. I didn't bring those percentages in today because it's not on our capital improvement plan and it's not what I was planning to answer.
Not a problem, I just, it says if we end up in the core program, we need to maybe think about what that might be. All right. Quick question on Greensboro Street, that's underwater in sewer or lift station two. I just see that we have 23, 24 budgeted at $4 million, don't we need to be planning on 4.7? Isn't that what our current budget number is for that?
No, that's the grants.
Well, that would, that's where the grants would need to show up in revenue, right? That we're planning those revenues, is that how it would play out?
I would think so. I would, I don't know, I would just say the difference would show up here in our expenses.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I have a little idea, just to be that little data comparison, because before David was talking about the 10-year plan, that's already green engineering contract area set down, so that plant there will be free after 10 years, and a lot of this, I need to get a little bit of a bigger one, um, so what I said, if I need to see water power too, but if he could get it on, I don't think we'll be able to see it, I made it, the various work pieces we done, there's, with, there's, a lot of pieces that weren't there, that kind of, we want to rate all this, because David did this thing about five years ago, and I had that chance to do anything and pay out two weeks, I've been buried up in dirt, and up, and up, and down, and they love to have a month.
Yeah. So in other words, Chris, no way to look at this list as gospel and don't try to nitpick the numbers.
I think it was in the right direction, but I didn't do any work, I said, get some green engineers, I mean, that month, but I will have that plan, you only have to do some, a lot of choosing.
Yeah, I mean, but it looks like you do have some real stuff in here, like the truck lease is going away after two years, so that's, you know, kind of a, you can see some light at the end of the tunnel on some of these things that have already, you know...
And I'll give you another sample here, well, lift station, uh, G M set replacement, we're saving about out and by, I could have the just those numbers, need to just those numbers, they were more in line, because I have started purchasing a lot of the trailer where I didn't have to replace the trailer every time I replaced the G M C M set, I just got to just, I stumbled, um, I was a long-term there, I did, something a little bit expensive, I had that time crisis, that's by head regular year, but about four years ago, I see, I was looking at the front, it was leaking up, and I started over again, I don't know if that sounds about a bad word, a lot of pictures on the way, and put the bill for a structure around on them, I don't know, I don't know.
Well, I mean, that one does project out, I mean, it looks 75, it looks like you, you know, ransom inflation or something on it, 75, 76, up to 80, but basically, that one, to me, says, you know, one a year going forward or something like that.
And that may have to spark inflation after 50, that's the green...
Yep, well, which is better than not having it on there, which was my, you know, question was, it's better to have a swag than nothing if you know it's something that's gonna have to...
Yeah, well, that number, that would change a lot, but I think, I've got, I've been, that's a year now, you can give me, I've got one, spoke to you, March, December, it's been a little, a year.
That's crazy.
And how long do they last?
Uh, you can get four, five years, uh, it's just really, you know, you've got these many blocks, you can, I'd say, four, five years, about top.
It just rusts down, it doesn't wear out, right?
And garbage, the garbage, you get a load of them, the cabs, the cabs inside the cabs are still massive, so then you end up paying for out, rusting on some of them, red yagers, just, you know, it's a load of them with closure, don't really do any good, but you still got saltwater inside, it may, get some of them while it's inside of it, but it's just kind of a big song, just because you got a load of them inside, uh, G M set is gonna last forever.
Is it making, covering it, is that an option? Does that help anything?
I don't, I told him about that coming, but the deal is, if you got it in the field to seal it up, then you have something named ventilation, where it's all used, and you got a little prey here in the field, looking, uh, cool.
I'm talking about outside, just put...
But I have, talking about, you know, going around, like, about to figure out some way to run that little wall, maybe you could block some of that south wind off, and I haven't actually driven, looked at it yet, but around some candy, I talked to a guy there a few weeks ago, he told me they had one on the town, the beach or something, they done some kind of roof or wall or something, but I, I kind of like see it, you know, see it, believe it, my world, rather than just hear it, so.
I know it's...
That's not as simple, somebody thinks, I just, just put it in the field, you know, the fire doesn't really run.
Right.
But I just remember, I was buying a gas, a barbecue grill like every year until I bought a cover, and the cover really made a difference, so I don't know if it applies there or not.
A long time before keeping them in the building, and then we got a leak in there by the inspector, and I'm glad he did, that we needed to have them like they're, they're doing something in the building.
Yeah.
You got an emergency, you need to run right in.
Yeah.
Critical facility, yeah.
No, I hear you.
I'm not saying inspector, I ain't talking about DM.
CRS, man.
Pull the cover off before you start it up, I'm sure.
Well, by rule, you don't get your stuff, critical facilities, put the stuff on the map, it can't be in the building and stop automatically, or meet the requirements of the N E C for critical facility.
Now, I said, now, I said inspector, I was talking about the man, the main man that's got my license over to get it, you make life difficult for me.
Well, it's, it's a good thing it's onsite and ready to go, it's just part of having it.
Can I ask a question about 441 acquisition improvement? So that's actually just improvement, right? The acquisition as far as the, that's all in the other budget, the loan payment?
Yeah, many of these line item titles carry over from year to year when the plan's updated, so that was just an inclusive of everything. So in other words, the line title didn't change when the CIP got updated from the year before, because it was inclusive of acquisition and repair, and now we're just to the repair part.
Well, I guess that's yet another example, because we're basically saying we're gonna spend on it the next two years, and we're not gonna have to spend on it at all for the next three years, or just because we don't have a swag of what we're really gonna need to spend?
Yeah, I think that goes in the we don't know yet category.
Yeah.
Kristi, let me jump back up to playground equipment, parks and recs facilities, is that mostly the stuff at Bridgeview Park you're looking at?
That line is inclusive and pulled directly from the comprehensive plan that McGill did, so the recommendation is that they made it in the back of that plan.
Okay.
The numbers correspond unless staff recognize something that needs to happen. They didn't identify playground equipment replacement till a while out, but if you look at it, there's a lot of wear on it.
I've looked at it, yeah.
So it will need to be prior to when they identified it, so there may be some staff inserts, but if you look at those numbers, they track really close to what you see at the back of that plan, in the capital plan that they laid out.
And that playground equipment isn't really cheap, just...
Playground equipment is not cheap.
Yeah, it's not like what goes in your backyard.
Be with a trash can, that right?
Commercial-grade trash cans for...
You're not suggesting that is playground equipment, are you, Chris?
We're not, we're not, we're not playground, it's on the right side.
Yeah, I, I looked at a little bit of it, and it's, it's not cheap.
Eighty-five park, related.
Yeah.
So we're saying 205,000 next year, and then 75, and then a year off, and another 200,000, that's what I'm reading this for, and that's just the playground camp, or is that more...
No, 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 that's, okay, so in the comprehensive plan that McGill did for all the parks, they outline different parks at the back, and in their capital plan, the numbers that were categorized for that fiscal year corresponds to what's in your capital plan, it could be at any park, it may not be playground equipment. That's a catch-all title, that's playground equipment and parks facilities.
So the answer is go look at the master plan?
Yes.
This is, this is a capital cost to implement the ma-, capital cost to implement the master plan, that's what this is?
Yes.
Except for like, Selfish Park has been carved out on this?
Correct, it was carved out because if there's a project that you potentially identify, which Selfish was last year, as something you may seek a grant for, most of the grant applications that work on point systems give you points, if you identify it in your capital plan, you lose points if you do not. So to get maximum points, if we know something may be potentially, we include it by name, it has to be by name.
Gotcha.
So can I ask about Block Q? So the, next year, the 500,000, that's actually for phase two, the restrooms, and that's for the grant, that's the one you're getting the grant for? The 300,000 was for the paving, and the 500 is for the bathroom?
Correct, but you guys will likely be entertaining that grant contract prior to the end of this fiscal year, like, probably by next month, and when you entertain the grant contract, you have to add it to the budget if you're gonna sign it in the contract, so it would actually move forward and be recognized in this fiscal year but not executed, there's no way we're building a bathroom out there, we all know that.
And two lines above that, there's another public restroom, where's that one, another 200 and 500?
Um, the 200,000 for this year was the two you're adding at 114 O B E and Avenue E.
And what was the 500 outlook for?
500 outlook, I am gonna have to get you an answer back on that.
Okay.
So we're, okay, so we've got ADA things kind of scattered in here, right? We don't have a separate capital project to take care of all the ADA stuff, is that accurate?
That's accurate.
Which it should be just part of our standard operating procedure, actually.
Say that again, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
I said, which it should just be part of our standard operating procedure, except for the stuff related to the, you know, litigation thing, but I'm going, it should just be part of our normal stuff.
Yeah, I was talking about the, I was talking about the negotiate...
It's just embedded, invisible, what we do.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, but where would we save the litigation stuff?
You talking about the mediation agreement, the living projects and the medi-, that's what I was talking about, they're in here.
Oh, they're still in here, too?
That's two of them, right there.
It's embedded.
Got it.
You're, you're, some, some of it is, like, if you look, 217 is really higher this fiscal year than the others, because of walkways.
Yeah.
And 55 is not gonna be enough in the outlook that was projected before, because we're seeing that just one walkway repair is running about $40,000, and we usually try to do at least two a year, and we have several that are not, they're, they're, they need repairing, they are coming about faster than needing to do two.
So your plan, 55 was one or two going forward, I'm sorry.
We predicated the budget each year to this point on one complete rebuild and one repair, but they are getting more usage and coming about faster than that from what we see, we have several next year that we're gonna need to address, so that line next year's gonna be high again.
Yeah, because we...
Plus, they cost more.
They cost more, they cost like double what they used to.
Yeah, I mean, we got, how many walkways do we have?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, okay, so one a year, each one has to last 22 years?
Ain't happened.
He said two a year.
Yeah.
Two, then that's, that's not 55.
She said one, one new and one repair.
But 55 was one, is what I thought.
No, she said it was one new and one repair.
One new repair, so two a year, so they have to last 12 years, okay.
But they're not, last them 12 years is what she's saying, she's gonna be planning to do more than two.
Yeah, okay.
I've had a lot of these, three, over there, start putting them all, and then get them to the motor, I can say, I used to build, a few years ago, they pulled them out, I did, I think, 96, but I'm not a contractor. Have you not, could we do that?
I was, I was just gonna say, it sounds like you got a new duties as assigned.
I bought that permit license, it was a, you know, you gotta find him some arsenal that you would, or...
Chris O'Pole's...
You can probably repurpose from somewhere.
Well, the difference was, it being, it worked, it built, boom, boom.
Yeah.
It's safe to say, you got your, right, I have to say, that, 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 that.
I have one last question on the CIP.
Promise?
I promise. Well, no, I don't promise.
I really don't promise.
The discussion is stimulating, I'm liable to come up with all kinds of stuff. Just on the canal dredging, we always show, it's like the account, the fund balances for the neighborhoods as an expense, is that just kind of an accounting thing to make a balance and then...
Yeah, because it's not actually a big expand.
Yeah, it's just has, it has to equal out, right? Okay.
But what that does for you, you got a shovel-ready project.
Yep.
I got you, so if something, right, I'm with you, yeah, okay.
That's the same question, I guess, because right now, it shows it all happening this year and then not, I mean, how often are we dredging the canals?
Well, we, we have it on a seven-to-10-year cycle, but there could be hot spots like this year, and actually, it could be every year, because if you have a storm come in, you, you stay shovel-ready, so we show it in the current year in case you're hit by a storm and you have to take action.
Right, but, but we don't, we only show this year, we don't show anything?
Well, it'll roll forward every year, it'll, although it'll go in increase as, as our increases.
The actual schedule will be in the dredge master plan, correct? Since when we did the last one and we get periodic surveys that update it?
And it's on, it's on seven years, I believe.
I think, sounds about right.
Does that number, it's probably increases, 12?
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I...
But then, so should your revenue, because you're making interest on the, on the bill to your revenue and stuff.
Yeah, based on what I know from the dredging program, we're in pretty good shape.
You're in very good shape.
Are we spending that, the 3.3 million this year?
No, no, it's, it's there, if we had a catastrophe and we had to dredge, it would be right there to go, but it's kind of like, it gets appropriated, we don't spend it, it gets swept back into that, um, cap...
Rolls forward to the next.
I agree, but just ignore that whole thing.
Well, I, I...
Self-sustaining, right? I mean, and then we get grants and topics, but if we do have to spend a little money...
Right, and the, and the revenue for that comes from the canal owners, and every year, they look at what it should be and they tell the town what they would like it to be, and that's the way it normally goes. The only thing I get concerned about there is where we're gonna put the spoils and how that'll affect the cost, but...
Well, part of the contract that she, will go to you.
For that one thing, but if we do a complete canal dredge, we gotta find a home for that stuff, and trucking could be more expensive, but I think the canal owners recognize if it becomes a huge expense, they just may get hit with special assessment, so, but that answered my accounting question.
That plus our advocacy efforts, based on the hill visit last year that Mayor Holden and Town Manager Hewitt had, Senator Bud is taking that up as one of his major issues as a junior legislator, and he's actually drafting language to send to the core as far as a letter, and hopefully, we can have top-down change in policy where dredge disposal happens.
No, I, I'm sorry if I'm beating this to death, but maybe it sounds to me kind of like beach nourishment, except that this is actually funded, where we've got this money, we might need it this year, oh, we don't, maybe we need it next year, nope, we don't, you know, I mean, I'd love to have 10 million bucks sitting in the beach nourishment, and while we don't need to nourish this year, but we got it in case we need it next year, next year, so, not sure the best way to show that in a capital plan, but that's how I'm viewing it, is we know at some point we're gonna need to spend a lot of money to dredge the canal or nourish the beach, we don't know which year it's gonna fall in, but we've got it planned for in here somewhere, no, I don't, I...
Agreed.
Okay.
I think Kristi got that.
Okay, right.
Good. I think she got that.
Okay.
Anything else? You can go back, you can go back to the...
I'm, I'm, I'm good, I mean, I would very much like to go to 10-year or 15-year, I don't know what, how much work, when we can get there, but it'd be great to have a 10-to-15 year, recognizing that 15 years out is kind of a fuzzy number with a big margin of error, but at least we put a placeholder out there so we're not pretending it doesn't exist.
It sounds like, David, you could do 10 years, you're, you're, you think that's reasonable?
Yes.
Going forward, yeah, we'll start with 10, we're going from five to 10.
As, as a matter of fact, our original CIP was 10 years, and the board wanted it truncated somewhat, so we cut it back to five years, I believe that's what happened, but it needs to be at least 10 years so that we can do the call-outs for the grants.
Anybody got anything else? Motion to adjourn? Wait a minute. Yes, ma'am?
Am I getting Mayor Holden?
Yes, ma'am, yeah, on the floor.
So, you, we owed you an answer back on your third possible earmark in fire departments for this meeting, so Warden Smith actually went above and beyond and wrote like a four-page letter back to David and I based on our question, but it narrows down to basically three things. As best they can tell, you're not eligible through USDA because you don't meet minimum distress for, our neighborhood's not stressed, Holton Beach is not a distressed community. With HUD, you could compete, but because we're not low to moderate income, we'll likely not be competitive, and you could compete under FEMA Emergency Operations Center if you were building an E O C and a fire department together, but you would only be eligible to fund the part that was the E O C, and we already have an E O C, so that doesn't seem to fit. They are not saying that it might not come out in a new fund for fiscal year '25, which hadn't been released for what those would be yet, but it is unlikely, and also, as far as legislators go, they have not been keen on pushing fire departments, only one's been pushed forward in the last three years.
So we need to come up with a new one?
Well, a new, they're not, we're, yeah, I can't do that.
Okay, is that, is that right? I mean, give up on that one?
Is there a motion on the floor? Want to come?
There was a motion to adjourn, yes, sir.
Have a second.
Okay. Trying to abide by my directions to be proper in parliamentary procedure, I now recognize your motion, and I'll recognize the second, but until they recognize, they don't count. So now they are official on the table, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say no.